To call to order the Monday, April 18th meeting of the City of Manona City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Corr?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Goforth?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise, your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible.
The break move airs to Spurrow. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th?
I'll move approval. Second.
Did anyone have any corrections or additions?
I have one correction on page seven. I had mentioned that we had two openings on transit and it got listed as two openings on landmarks.
I was going to mention that because I knew we didn't have any on landmarks.
Yeah, no, we're good there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have two appearances tonight. The first one is Richard Bernstein, who will be speaking to us virtually. Rick?
Hello.
It's all yours.
I'm here.
We generally like to try to keep these to three or four minutes.
Okay, I'll do that for now.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to bring the council's attention.
Could you hang on just a minute? We're gonna, can you turn that up, Jackson, a little bit? Sorry, we're having trouble hearing yous. We're just gonna turn it up a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to bring the council's attention to something that I had learned recently and that there's a federal government effort to remove derogatory terms from approximately 660 different locations and place names across the country, in particular to the word squaw. And I know the council was in favor of changing the name of Squaw Bay, but I also was hoping that the council would address a couple of different street names here in Manona. One, I believe, does use the word squaw as a street name. But I'd also point out that Winnequa is a combination of the word Winnebago and squaw. So in that regard, I think that should be given consideration as well. I know this might be a big issue because it is such a long street and there's so many residents border the street. And I did think that perhaps an easy way to find a new name for it might be just to use the word Winnebago. So I just wanted to bring that up as an issue and I was hoping the council would focus some attention on that.
Thank you very much. We have one more appearance tonight. Ron Binsley. Ron, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Can you hear me okay? Mayor O'Connor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to present my comments on the South Winnequa Road project. I offer these comments on behalf of myself as well as my wife, Jenny Binsley. I wanted to bring the councils, make the council aware of possible impacts, likely impacts to our property due to the road bike project. We live on 713. Moigara Road, the west side of our lot, is located on Winnequa Road. Our house is immediately north of a number of homes that are being impacted by this project, the Whitties, the Mullmans, the Walshes. Because of the limited right-of-way on our side of the road and because the city was seeking temporary easements in the properties to our neighbors to the north, we had concerns about possible impacts to our property, so we reached out to the engineers in March to ask them what kind of impact they anticipated. At that time, they told us that there would be no real impacts. They weren't looking for any kind of easement on our property. And they shared with us their design. Looking over the design, we thought that it was likely it was on our property, so we shared with them a survey we had done in 2020, and they agreed that their design was on our property. So they got back to us and said, no, there would be a need for a temporary easement in order to accommodate the sidewalk next to our property. So we've been working with Josh Stradka and Dan Stefani on trying to find solutions for this. And the first pass they made on this was to suggest that they blend the slopes on the side of our yard to match the new sidewalk, particularly in the southwest corner of our yard. This type of approach is going to lead to a dramatic reshaping of the yard, to have a slope that could be as much as 1 to 5, 1 to 4. And we don't, we feel that would be a serious negative impact to our property. It would be a maintenance issue. It would be, you know, usability would become much less on our property. We also are concerned about drainage, erosion. So we mentioned this to Dan and Josh, and they agreed that that could be a serious problem in the southwest corner of the property, so they suggested, well, maybe a wall. We could put in some kind of retaining wall there. It would either be a privately owned retaining wall on our property or potentially it could be a city-owned wall, but then the city would need to get a permanent easement to place the wall there. So I just wanted to make you aware of the issue and to ask for your support in finding a fair and equitable solution to this. Working through, we would very much like to see a wall there rather than re-blending of the slopes, and we would like the city to give serious consideration to helping us with the monetary cost of, you know, addressing the impacts that will occur on our property. So thank you for listening to my comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any other appearances today, so we will move on. There is no public hearing. There is no consent agenda. I'm going to move on to the unfinished business, to the new business first, so that we can consider the borrowing resolutions so that Jeff can get on the road, because he has to get back to Milwaukee area tonight. So if you want to move to under new business, item 2B, consideration of resolution 22-4-2563, authorizing the issuance and sale of 3.4 million in taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2022C, put forth by the finance director, and this is starred for immediate approval.
Jeff, just suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve? Move approval. Second. Mark?
Yeah, just a quick thing for Jeff Talk. So last meeting, we authorized Jeff to start negotiating. Jeff is back with the final numbers dealing with bondholders. The first one is for 3.4 million dollars, it's a change to 3,405,000. Five thousand, I'm looking for that. The second is for refinancing of a TIF ban, so it's a taxable note.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having here tonight. Appreciate you taking it out of order. I am heading back to the office, by the way, Mayor.
I'm impressed.
Work to do for Manona when, if you'll sign one of those resolutions for us. Again, this is refunding of the last remaining note for TID 9, and it's taxable, of course, because you were wise enough to put developers' agreements in place, which guaranteed certain values in that district, and that certainly has expedited the growth in that increment and also with that, the growth in the revenues that we're accruing from that development. So this is self-supported debt, even though it's issued as a general obligation. Majority of our debt, you know, we put into revenue bonds last fall, sorry, February, 11.8 million. So this ties up the rest of TID 9. If you'll take a look at the sheet I passed out, it's a $3,405,000 issue with a purchase price of $3,325,440, all costs in, true interest cost of 4.27%. If you go down below, you'll see our fine AA+ stable rating from Standard &amp; Coors, and you'll see the yields or prices at 265 in year one, out to a 435 in 2035. With that, I want to just kind of dovetail into what Alder Wood said earlier about reinvestment rates. This is an incredible investment if you have core dollars. For other municipalities out there, you can invest in local government securities. When you look at the yields, of course, they have to be core dollars because you are, as an example, if you looked at year five, 2027, you would be getting a yield on your dollars of 3.45%. As you know, we're in a tax-exempt organization. You won't pay taxes on that income like an individual would or a business. So my point being is, as you're looking at, and Mark and I have had this chat, if you're looking at certain reinvestment and looking to try to increase your dollars that you're generating from investment, here's something that's out yielding most everything else that's out there. And the banks are going to take some time to follow, even though the feds are going to have three or four rate hikes this year. So yes, you will start to get more investment income, I think as everybody realizes, but this is something that's usually overlooked in terms of investment in core dollars, so just thought I'd point that out. Yeah?
Okay.
All in all, still not terrible rates, although the market certainly is in a topsy-turvy kind of position. Every day, we're losing three to four basis points. In other words, yields are going up by three or four basis points. They moved five this afternoon after this was priced this morning already. So I can tell you tomorrow morning, you won't get these rates. They're going to be four to five basis points higher throughout the scale. And we've been seeing that happen for the last three months, four months, almost. Trend looks like it's going to continue for some time, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this particular issue.
Questions, anyone? Alder Goforth?
Thanks for exponentially working on this, Jeff. I know those rates are creeping up and they will continue. I was just curious of what our annual debt service will be on this?
Yes, the annual debt service is going to be right around 300. Not the first year, it's a little bit less. What we did is we tied it into the remaining revenue stream from TID number nine.
Okay.
So we looked at TID number nine and we said, okay, we've got revenue bonds outstanding, the 11.8 million we put in place. And then based on where we were in terms of that remaining increment and the development that's coming online, it left us with about $400,000 in some years, a little more, 400 and some thousand in available revenue for debt service. So what we did is we structured this issue so that the debt service principles came under that target amount. So not only will you have enough to pay on an annual basis, you're going to be dropping some dollars each year that's unused into that TIF fund, which will basically be your debt service fund. In all likelihood, you're going to call some of this debt early in years to come because you're going to have the revenues in by law. Once you get enough revenues to call debt, you really have to call the debt, and we can't keep the TID open any longer than is economically feasible. But that's a great question.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Doug? So the amount of this should actually be 3,405,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I would move, currently says 3,400,000, so I'll move to amend that any place that number is used, that 3,405,000 be substituted.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Corr?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Goforth?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to the other item that Jeff is here for, item C, consideration of resolution 22-4-2564, authorizing the issuance and sale of $6 million in general obligation promissory notes, series 2022B, put forth by the finance director, and this is also starred for immediate approval.
Will you suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay.
Yes, this one's just the capital borrowing, it's just for 2,000, pre-2,000, 2,000, like the capital borrowing budget. And we did add on 2 million dollars we talked about last time for repayment or saving.
Thank you, Mark. Now, you can see from the comparison of yields in the bottom that this, of course, is a tax-exempt issue. Prices certainly are higher because, of course, the interest income to the investor is exempt from federal taxes. These are public purpose projects, which allows us to issue them as tax exempt. We have 6 million, we have a purchase price of 6,72,379, which is a net premium, of course, of 72,379. And after all of that is factored in over the time that we're going to pay it out against the principal at those yields, you get a 3.17% all-in cost. I looked at one of our issues last year just to give you some kind of an idea, and I don't want to pour salt in the wounds, but it was about a 219. So you can see that, obviously, rates have gone up over the last year, and I'm pretty sure they're going to continue to go up through 2022. But all in all, still a pretty darn good interest rate for as long as I've been in this business, but I think you also know we have some debt, 10-year notes outstanding that were well under 1.5% all costs in. So as we said earlier, we've got some great projects done with those monies, certainly well ahead of the inflationary rate, and even this is well ahead of the inflationary rate. So get them done as quickly as we can, and all in all, I think it was an opportune time to borrow those funds and to get our improvements underway, so happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Anyone? Alder Moore?
Yeah, can I just, I know that, Mark, or it was brought up the last time this came up, but can you remind me, once we receive the monies from the county, how that'll be handled against this, this note?
I think it's a program right now. We'll use it to, when we pay off, when we refinance the 8.5, or we refinance the ban right now we have on St. W. We'll take that and reduce that now.
Okay.
At that time. So as soon as we get that, we'll have a refinance, and we'll, how soon will be, fairly soon.
Okay, so it won't be impacting this, it'll be impacting the other?
The money from D.C. County, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Goforth?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Corr?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jeff. I think I did sign, did I sign everything I need to?
Yep.
Okay, moving back to item G, under unfinished business, item G1A, consideration of resolution 22-4-2551, award of contract for the 2022 South Winnequa Road project, put forth by the public works director. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval. Second.
Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Seeing as though we're on the topic of this South Winnequa bid, I do have some relevant comments to add to what Mr. Binsley informed the council of at the beginning of the meeting. To confirm, he is right, we will need TLE to put the sidewalk in front of his parcel. The sidewalk will fit within the street right-of-way, but the TLE will be needed for a certain portion for installation of the sidewalk. So we'll continue to work with them, as well as the other three property owners that we have in that corridor where we need TLE. So that will be an ongoing effort. We have until just after the July 4th holiday to take care of all of that work. That said, the Public Works Committee did approve, recommend approval of the South Winnequa bids at the April 6th committee meeting. And to summarize again, Wolf Paving and Excavating did provide the low bid in the amount of And we also have the bid alternate number one that we're seeking approval of as well, and that is $86,875.20. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for me on this.
Does anyone have any questions? Alder Groupie?
I'll just say thank you and also to Strand for engaging in the conversation with the Binsley family and being willing to kind of work for a solution cooperatively. I appreciate that. And thanks for bringing me up to the table.
Anyone else? Alder Wood?
Well, yeah, first of all, I'm just really glad to see we finally have the bid and it's below budget. I did have a question with regard to the concerns that the Binsleys raised. They had a couple of different options of how to address their land, either grading or building the retaining wall. We could do that within this contract that we're approving.
As of right now, the 5 to 1 slope that Mr. Binsley referenced is correct. I think there's some things that Strand is looking at, but if a retaining wall is needed, we're looking at about one block row in height. I know Josh is also looking at a minor curb head, if you will, that would go along the backside of the sidewalk. So that might alleviate some additional costs related to a retaining wall. He's still looking at that and seeing how it fits within the design and the street right-of-way limits, but if a retaining wall would be needed, at this time, we did inform the property owner that it would probably have to be a private wall. We didn't intend to install a retaining wall here. The slopes do meet the industry standards, but like I said, we want to continue to work with the Binsleys. Josh thinks that he has a solution that will, I guess, provide a minimum impact, but he needs to crunch his numbers yet, and we need to coordinate with the Binsleys a little further. But just like the other three property owners, we're committed to doing this right. We want to have open lines of communication, and we have time yet. So we do have, the surveys that were done, I know we went off the 2006 survey, I believe, that was done, when the road was reconstructed last time. The Binsleys had a private survey done, and they installed new bins, and that is correct. So the sidewalk was adjusted to fit within that survey. That said, the sidewalk will fit within the street right-of-way. Some slope adjustments need to be made, but there is the possibility or potential where a one-row block wall is needed. So that's what we have to work through.
Okay.
But in any case, we would still need a TLE to get that sidewalk in, and we're going to communicate, keep on communicating that as well.
All right. Thank you.
And Dan, I've told the Binsleys I'd be happy to meet with them and with you and Josh if need be as well.
Yep.
So I told them, and as you just said, we want to do this right and make sure that everybody's happy with how we're affecting their property if we can work that out, so. Any other questions? Alder Goforth?
Just sort of clear, so the slope, is that in the terrace where they would place their, like, garbage bins, recycling bins? Or if not, where is that?
Both areas. There's a slope area that we're adjusting the sidewalk to level out the terrace area, I think, but what Mr. Binsley is referring to is the slope area behind the sidewalk on private property. So we have similar instances with the other property owners, the Whitties and the Mullmans. So like I said, we're going to make it right. I mean, that's why we need the TLE, so.
Thank you. And then I was wondering, how did that resolve with the Mullmans and the Whitties, or is that still ongoing as well?
The Whitties, we do have a negotiated agreement. We just have to get it on paper at this point. The Mullmans are still getting some private estimates on their side, and once they have all that information, we'll meet with them, just like we did with the Whitties. And if it's more of a significant cost, we'll bring that forward to the city administrator if that signature is needed, but we feel that we can get that within the proper spending limits. In any case, we do have adequate budget to cover these expenses, so within the approved amount.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Any other questions? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Goforth?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Corr?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on. Item 1B, consideration of ordinance 4-22-750, amending chapter 216 of the Manona Code of Ordinances regarding erosion and stormwater control. This is put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Brad, are you going to address this?
Yeah, sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So at the last meeting, there was a, questions raised about road control applications and authority in terms of regulating shorelines and/or work on shorelines. The Public Works Committee, just as an aside, approved this at their April 6th meeting, but with regards to that question, if you look at, in the ordinance, chapter 216-7, item F, it does have budget dressing, possible shoreline erosion control applications and otherwise. This would usually regard single-family properties. And in that, with that, if there is no building permit applied to the site, then our chapter 216 would apply to it. If there is a permit applied to the site, then the building permit, building inspector and the zoning department would regulate both sites, so just wanted to address that because that was a question from the last meeting. Other than that, everything is summarized in the memo that Aaron Pope from Beervicker shared that should be part of the packet tonight. It was a part of the packet last time. But that, the Public Works Committee didn't raise any questions, so I'll, the questions that the City Council has tonight.
Questions, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Brad.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
How is the?
Well, baby's great.
Oh, God.
She's been great. Cece had to get picked up from daycare today, the fever, so that's always great.
Oh, no.
Another day in the Bruin household.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
You too.
Item 1C, consideration of ordinance 4-22-751, amending chapter 335-8 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Noise Disturbing the Peace, put forth by Alder Goforth and myself. And I will reiterate that I agree to allow myself to be listed as second here for purposes of discussion, so. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Brian, do you want to?
Just a point of information for the council. Based upon the discussion at the last council meeting, there's some question about how do we deal with commercial, non-single-family residential construction noise versus single-family residential construction noise? And there seemed, again, this is me taking a little bit of liberty, seemed to be a sense of wanting to separate those two different things. So in the information that's in your packet on page 86, I separated out a commercial, institutional and multiple-family residential construction noise from single-family detached residential construction noise. So there's two separate sections in the ordinance for commercial and basically non-single-family residential noise. This change in the ordinance would require the noise to stop at 7:00 p.m. For single-family detached residential, so single-family houses, that would remain at 9:00 p.m. Seems to address some of the questions and concerns that were raised at the last council meeting.
Thanks, Brian. That was great. Any questions?
Alder Goforth?
Alder Goforth? Thank you. Thanks, Brian, for that work. I did talk with a lot of folks about this, just, you know, because it was a curiosity for me, and I just wanted to get input from the public. and I just wanted to get input of, from the public. Um, it sounds like an eight, an 8:00 PM is, is a very popular, um, line of thought. But I did talk with some commission members that said that this specific item wasn't discussed in the commission meetings. So I felt like it's probably best, just because there are a lot of details and as Alder Thomas pointed out, um, you know, you don't want unintended consequences, that I felt that it was probably best to send this back to that commission for discussion, just to flesh it out and make sure it's all, um, accurate and in the, you know, in the way we would like to see. So, um, that would be, um, something I would like to move to do. Just send this back to commission for referral.
I don't think this actually sends it back to the commission, does it?
No, she's, she would be making a motion to.
Yeah. So I wanted to let people continue to discuss, but I, I was gonna make that motion at some point, you know, if people would continue to discuss.
So how do we handle this, Brian?
All right.
Should I make the motion right now?
Yeah. And Alder can make a motion to refer back to committee. If it gets a second and adopted by the council, then they would be automatically referred back to that committee. I'm assuming you mean public safety committees?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. So then anyway, go back to the committee. They'd have another discussion item and send it back to council instead of.
So you want another discussion beyond what Brian has done with?
Yeah. I think 9:00 PM just seems pretty late because I think a lot of the challenges are with the single-family homes where they're using small, you know, contractors, not union labor that's ending early. Um, and so just in some of my conversations with people, um, you know, having construction go until 9:00 PM when you're putting your kids to bed at 7:30 or you yourself go to bed early because your job starts very early, that 9:00 PM is just a little too disruptive. When, when the time we all, you know, many of us regroup in our backyards is kind of that period after 6:00 PM to, to 9:00 PM. So, um, I think, you know, our quality of life here in Manona is pretty fantastic. And, um, I know there was a, a project that construction went on at home for two years and that was really, uh, exasperating for those neighbors because the, the home was like 20 feet within their property. So, um, yeah, I would like to make a motion then to send this back to Public Safety Commission for more discussion. Um, yeah.
I'll second.
Yeah. And I'll just express that I, I'm supportive of the motion as it currently stands with Brian's, um, and Mr. Gattow's adjustments. Um, I do agree that there's no reason why it should be a 7:00 PM cutoff for commercial, um, construction. And I do think, you know, we often talk about making sure that there is committee approval and review, um, prior to, you know, deciding as a council how we would like to proceed. So I think it is an appropriate move to send that for review.
Does anyone have any thing to say about the Alder Goforth's?
Yeah, I would just say, I, well, I would just say that, um, to, to say that it wasn't discussed at the public safety meeting, I don't think is quite accurate. I mean, we didn't go through every word in this, uh, in the public safety meeting, nor would we in any situation. But, but to say that the, the time, uh, originally allotted was not, uh, you know, originally suggested was not discussed at the committee, I think is just inaccurate.
Oh, okay.
I heard differently.
Alder Thomas?
Yeah, just a, a couple of comments. Um, you know, I don't think it's possible to prevent people from making noise on their property. I mean, are we going to then say you can't mow your lawn after 7 o'clock at night or after 6 o'clock? Um, and we, and you're right, we didn't discuss this at public safety, um, because I don't, and I'm aware of, we weren't, um, we weren't made aware that there were any problems or any issues with this. Um, so I'm perfectly happy to have it come back to public safety to discuss it because I think this is one of those proposals that sounds good in principle, but the devil is always in the details. And when you find out what you are restricting people from doing, it's probably more than you will, than, than you realize if you do it till 7 o'clock. That's, um, that's my take on it. So I'm happy to have it come back and have the committee, um, discuss the merits of it and people want to come and express concerns pro or con, I think that's a good thing, too.
Alder, go forth.
Thank you for that, Alder Thomas. Um, I did want to say of, you know, I, I kind of fielded some, some people on this question and 8:00 PM was the resounding wish for residents. So just to pass that along to you in my focus group study, in very informal focus group.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Alder Moore?
Yeah, I, I just, um, a couple of things come to mind to, to, you know, Alder Thomas's point. Um, you know, the question is, you know, what does this apply to, among other things? Does that mean that somebody can't mow their yard at night? Um, you know, because, you know, construction or repair is all in the eye of the, you know, I mean, who gets to define what's construction and repair? You know? I mean, um, uh, so, because like, you know, as one example, I have a neighbor who chainsaws wood occasionally at night. You know, do I like it? No. But it happens twice a year. It's one night, maybe two nights, you know? Um, so I don't, you know, um, so I guess, you know, my point is, is that I, you know, I do think that this could be a slippery slope. Um, and I appreciate that, um, there's certainly other noises that people could be, uh, could have on their, you know, lawn that would be, on their property that would be a lot worse than somebody, um, uh, I mean, obviously if they're, you know, if they've got big, heavy machines or doing whatever, it's one thing. But anyway, I'm, you know, if, if Alder Thomas is chair of the committee, um, is something that, somebody who, you know, wants to, she, she's comfortable with it going back, um, you know, I, I don't have an objection to it, but I also have, um, no problem. Because I, and, and I guess the second thing I would say is, just as a friendly reminder, we all talk to residents. So, you know, we all have our own focus groups, right? And, and we all talk to residents. We all engage residents in the community when we're, we're thinking about these things. So, um, so anyway, I, you know.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of Alder Goforth's, um, motion to return this to the Public Safety Committee, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. Let's see. Item D, consideration of ordinance 4-22-752, amending chapter 263 dash six of the Code of Ordinances to allow no mow May, put forth by Alders Wood and Groupie. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Doug, did you want to?
Don't really have a lot to add to, um, the discussion last time. We had a good discussion at the Parks Board meeting with, relative to, uh, you know, what would, would or wouldn't be done in the parks. And I think the, basically, the plan is to continue mowing. Areas that we mow now, we'll continue to mow. Refresh, Alder Groupie, help me out. I know we went back and forth with Jake on, he was going to identify a pet, a place that, to do like a demonstration, uh, and I'm thinking on where.
So Woodland Park will be, uh, no mow for the month of May and sustainability is working on, uh, marketing and signage, et cetera, to, to promote that and to give people an awareness of what it's about. Um, the other plot is, um, Outlet Mound on Ridgewood and that is not only going to be no mow May, but, um, we have been working on a, um, Native American mound maintenance plan in parks that would cover that for, you know, forever. Um, so no mow May will be another place where it'll be more obvious at Outlet Mound, but that will be something that we hope to just permanently not have large mowers on top of. And we're gonna work on, you know, native planting and other things of that nature. So.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item 2A, consideration of temporary Class B fermented malt beverage retailer's license for Gigi's Playhouse Madison Dash for Down Syndrome. President Julie K. Burns, 4104 Manona Drive, Madison, Wisconsin, 53716, for the period of April 30th, 2022. And this is put forth by the License Review Committee and is start for immediate approval.
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval.
I'll second.
Doug, did you want to address this, too?
Sure. This is just a, uh, a run using, uh, let's see. But they're using the same, same course as the, um, what's?
The, like, Manona 5K, I think, right?
Yeah. Um, no, uh, Who Do It Hustle. Anyway, it's just, so, um, yeah, it's just a, and they're a new, new sponsor. So that's why we had them come to license review and they've already have been talking to PD and to parks. So they're, yeah, seem pretty ready to go.
Any questions?
I just want to comment, uh, I think.
Groupie.
I think Julie is a wonderful human and I think Gigi's is a great organization. I think we're very lucky to have it in our neck of the woods. So, I'm excited to support them in this way.
Anyone else? Alder Goforth?
I, I want to second that and also say that, um, one of their organizers, Eric Salzweidel, is fantastic and he runs a great operation. So I have a lot of confidence in this and I think it's gonna be a great success for them.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. We've taken care of items B and C. Item D, consideration of resolution 22 dash four dash 20, 2556, approval of general development plan, GDP for 112 and 208 Owen Road by Slindy Realty Company, put forth by the Plan Commission.
Mayor?
Yes?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Given that there are interest rates attached to this, is, is there a need, um, I would ask, Mr. Slindy, is there a need for us for immediate action on this? Does it make any difference in your borrowing?
Um, well, I thought we were just discussing the GDP today.
Right. Yeah.
But it, but it, but it, but it impacts how fast they can move ahead is my question.
Well, time is of the essence. Yeah, I would say that. Yeah.
We're moving as, uh, quickly as we can. I mean, in some respects, we couldn't pick a worse time to do this.
So, but, but I, you, you need to get it through here as fast as you can or, or does a two-week delay till the next meeting make any difference?
Well, I think it does in the sense that we're moving forward with the PIP plan on Monday with, uh, the Plan Commission, but I don't know how interworking governments work in that sense.
Well, the reason I ask is because we can suspend, we can, we have the possibility of suspending the rules and taking this out of action and acting on it this evening. And I'm wondering if that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any dis, I guess, can I get a wild discussion on that? Any discussion? Doug?
Yeah, I can't support doing that. I just got, um, some of the materials, the Plan Commission materials, uh, today. And I just, you know, I have questions. Um, I just got the traffic impact analysis memo just now. So I'm not ready, any, what, any way, shape or form to vote on this tonight.
Anyone else have anything to say? Alder Moore?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I mean, obviously, as you'll hear from Doug in a minute, the Plan Commission was very favorable, um, on this GDP and, um, with good reason because, um, the Slindys were very responsive to, um, what we asked. Uh, and, um, but that being said, it's a big decision. Um, I, it's a, would represent a very big development of a thing next to the riverfront, the largest development that we've done. Um, and, uh, in total, anyway. And, um, you know, it seems to me that there are some other pieces of the puzzle, um, that need to be put together or, or worked on by the state. Um, my understanding is that the Slindys, among these are, are, have, are working with the CDA, correct?
Not as of yet. There's not been a TIF ask that's been forthcoming, but they are working on.
They're planning on it. So, so that's just to say, you know, if we were to speed up approval on our end, um, I mean, is that having, I mean, would, would, in the absence of having discussions with the CDA as of yet, would, you know, would that, would you really be approaching a bank and, a bank and sticking a shovel in the ground any sooner? In the absence of any kind of decisions from the CDA?
Well, I mean, we've already had four or five conversations with banks and we're trying to keep this thing moving as fast as we can because there's so many variables here that we don't control. Um, and I don't see any benefit to us in waiting personally. I don't speak for you, I, this, but personally, I don't feel that way.
Alder Thomas?
Yeah. Just a, just a point. There is always a challenge because the Plan Commission wants fewer units, the CDA wants more, and there has been a negotiation process. And what this has done has dragged out the process and made the project more expensive to do from an interest standpoint. And I think we need to do what we can do if we, if we'd like this project. I think we need, we have, it's incumbent upon us to, to try and expedite this so that they have the ability to do what the Plan Commission has asked them to do, given the increasing interest rates. That's the only reason I bring it up. Because just like we passed, um, rules because we know the interest rates are affecting our borrowing, they also affect the businesses' borrowing as well. And we need to be cognizant of that. It's good enough for us, it should be good enough for them. That's, that's all I, that's, that's my suggestion. If we don't have enough information, um, then I guess we have to, then we can't do it. But if, if it's feasible, I think it makes sense to be, um, to treat our businesses well. And so that's my comment.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
Yeah, Kathy, I would, I certainly respect, um, I, and, and applaud, uh, your reference to treating our business as well. Um, however, I would disagree with your characterization that it's dragged out because of, you know, differences between the CDA or with the plan or whatever. It's, you know, um, the, the Slindys came to the Plan Commission for multiple pre-hearings, God bless them, um, in front of the Plan Commission so that we could keep it moving forward. And we were very enthusiastic about the plan, but again, this is the deciding body and, and it's a big development. And, um, as Brian just said, um, you know, things are not resolved with the, my understanding, uh, an application is monopoly made by the CDA. And it seems to me that, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that, that, uh, I mean, in the absence of any kind of CDA decisions, as an example, um, I mean, would it really make a difference?
And I wasn't being critical. I, it's, it's the process.
Right.
That, that's, that I was just referring to what, what the process is, that you, that you sort of get caught and you go between and you, it's a negotiating process, but it takes time.
Right.
And that time has cost money.
Right.
You know, let the council vote on it. If they're not ready, they're not ready.
Right.
But I think, but I think we ought to consider it.
I guess, um, Jeff and Bert, my question to you would be if, um, I understand that we want to keep this moving. I'm 200% behind keeping this moving. The flip side of that coin is, is that, and I understand you've been talking to a lot of banks. I get that. But my point is, is that would you be locking in a specific dollar amount or interest rate or both with a bank if we were to do it tonight with a bank in the absence of any kind of discussion with the CDA or application with the CDA?
Well, it wasn't my understanding that we needed CDA's approval or opinion on a GDP. Um, that, I didn't know that that was part of the process. That, I didn't know that that was part of the process.
You don't, and that, that's not what she's implying.
No.
I'm talking about from a, not, not from approval of, of the development, I'm talking about from a financial standpoint. In the absence of any discussion at this point with the CDA. Would you be signing a contract and, and locking in an interest rate with a bank, having no commitment whatsoever from the CDA?
I, I would say not.
Okay.
I would say we would.
So waiting two weeks is not a problem?
So waiting two weeks is not gonna, is not gonna be an issue, no?
Uh, well, let me just say, we've been doing this and attending meetings since December.
Right.
The more we can get accomplished, I mean, we're not just dealing with interest rates, we're talking about construction costs. I mean, my gosh, this, this, this project has taken a hit and we haven't even, we haven't even begun, so. But to your answer, to your question, uh, no, I don't see that we'd be signing any, uh, contracts with any banks. And all, all the lenders that we've talked to are scratching their heads saying, well, um, what's your time to? So, well, you know, here we are, so. Uh, Jeff, you have an opinion?
Well, I mean, when we started, interest rates were three and a quarter, and if we're lucky, we'll get four and a quarter. And that equates to $8,000 a month in additional borrowing costs. So, I don't know what else to say other than that. Math kind of speaks for itself.
I have to call the questions so we can, yeah, move forward with the vote and allow Doc to continue.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion does not pass. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, thank you, thank you for your time. Uh, tonight we're here to discuss the general development plan, the GDP, uh, for the projects of 112 to 208 Owen Road. Uh, formerly known as the USPS building and Village Lanes over there on Owen Road. Uh, the Slindy Realty Company, uh, proposed a two-phase mixed-use project, uh, with ground floor retail and 175 rental units on the site that's just over four acres. Uh, this includes the proposed relocation of the existing USPS space, uh, once Phase One opens. Can everybody on Zoom hear me? I just saw that message pop up.
I can.
You can, okay.
Good.
Uh, the applicant also, uh, proposes between 35 and 50% of the units at Phase One, uh, as workforce housing, which just as a reminder, um, is defined really as allowing residents to live where they work. Uh, includes, um, you know, professions such as teachers, police officers, bank staff, uh, and these would be restricted to those earning between 60 and 80% of the area median income. Uh, the amenities, uh, the building includes outdoor plaza decks, grills, fire pits, uh, community and exercise rooms, uh, as well as a, a pet run. Uh, the applicant does plan to visit the CDA with the TIF ask in the near future, um, and I'm working with them to, to coordinate that. This GDP, uh, was heard at the Plan Commission four times, uh, in addition to the requested rezoning, which obviously has come back to, to the council as well. Uh, the pre-hearings were in December and February with two considerations, uh, in both March and April 11th. I'll get on to that detail in a second. Uh, the Plan Commission during their discussions, uh, focused, um, extensively on the density of the project, uh, evaluating that against adjacent properties. At March 14th, uh, at that meeting, they did recommend, uh, approval to the city council, uh, with a density of 40, four zero, units per acre, which would have taken 30 units, three zero, off of the total unit count. The applicant chose not to pursue that, uh, instead to re-submit, uh, for consideration of the April 11th meeting with edits and changes to the plan instead. These revised plans shifted the unit count from 191 units to 175 and also included greater, greater step backs on the fourth floor, on the top floor of the massing, um, to help with some of the scale, uh, especially at, at the street. Um, the Plan Commission will be discussing the precise implementation plans, PIP, uh, for Phase One, which will be the former Village Lane site, uh, the western of the two, uh, at that upcoming meeting on April 25th. As mentioned, a traffic impact analysis was conducted independently, um, and that was, had been discussed during the rezoning process. Um, I will make sure that that is included in the second read, uh, so that everybody has a copy of that. Uh, but the highlights of that were that there were limited impacts, uh, accounting for the fact that there is about 15,000 square foot of, uh, retail currently. And so, given the reduction in retail and sort of the AM and PM flows of the residential, uh, it was deemed to have limited impact without the need for any more redesign. Level of service, particularly at the Owen Road and on the drive intersection, was deemed, um, to be good and it would have the capacity for something similar to this. Uh, so with that, the, um, Plan Commission recommended unanimously, uh, to City Council, uh, that the GDP be approved. As we, we've already heard, uh, we're joined by the applicant, Bert, and Jeff Slindy as well. For any questions, we have two members from the Plan Commission as well.
Alder Groupie?
Um, I'm just curious if there is going to be sidewalk access now on that side of the road with the development going in?
Yes, so there will be sidewalk access, um, the existing, um, once construction is complete, the, the cross access will remain, but there will also be the sidewalk in front, um, as well.
Great, I know it's heavily populated with senior, um, living facilities and I think that'll be a great benefit to residents, thank you.
Yeah, we actually met with, um, some of the Monona Hills residents and they voiced, um, you know, their comments about having accessibility and sidewalk access on the opposite side of the street, so, uh, we definitely want to include that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Alder Wood?
Yeah, I guess there, will Stran be looking at the traffic impact analysis? Or I know we talked about that earlier, that that might be a possibility.
It did come up at the, the Plan Commission meeting, um, the, the commission, I, I had spoken with the applicant, I reviewed it and, and had a couple of comments myself, um, questions and things like that when, when I saw it. Uh, it, at Plan Commission, the commission were comfortable with, uh, the determination, they did use a independent engineering firm rather than a civil or somebody like that that could have, have done this, so they had a third party do it. Uh, it was mentioned that Stran could potentially review, um, you know, rather than do another, that they could potentially review it. It was not something they recommended, but it could certainly be something we, we looked at.
Yeah, and just a little thing about the traffic study, um, it didn't include any historical traffic at Village Lanes. So, obviously, that traffic doesn't exist right now, so they weren't able to measure that traffic, um, mathematically. So they weren't able to, you know, take that into consideration. And it was still, you know, a lower amount of traffic than I think most people want to admit.
Yeah, right. I mean, I just glanced at it and saw the levels of service for the intersection are, are really good, so, which is really, I guess, it's not been my experience now using it. So, yeah, I guess, yeah, but I haven't had a chance to look at it completely yet, so.
Uh, just a comment on that traffic study as well. Doug, when you mentioned that initially, um, and Doug Palmer recommended that we get a traffic study done, after this first council meeting, Jeff, Slindy and I, uh, both discussed, and I said, Jeepers, you know, I, I can't imagine traffic's gonna be worse than what Village Lanes produced. Uh, in my wildest dreams, I can't imagine that. However, what do I know? Maybe, maybe we need to do this and so we talked about it, we agreed. And we also intentionally said, well, let's get somebody that we don't know, that is completely a third party, so that no one can question the validity of this. And, uh, we had just recently completed a transaction in Sun Prairie and a firm that was recommended for the city of Sun Prairie, um, we used and they were completely independent. And just, just feel free to review it any way you want, it is my list.
Yeah, thanks, Bert, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Alder Moore?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I reiterate that the, um, that the Plan Commission, uh, after seeing this, uh, you know, this, as was indicated by Doug numerous times, um, was very pleased this last time around and I want to commend the Slindys again for, for working with the commission, um, uh, it's safe to say, uh, for all intensive purposes. Among other things, Chris Hornberg was virtually speechless, which doesn't happen very often in a Plan Commission meeting. And, uh, yeah, but we, we all, you know, felt very positively and frankly, I, I want to also, um, not only thank, uh, Jeffrey Burke, but also, um, thank their architects, KBA, because, um, it was really, for those people that are interested in development in Monona, I think the, the last presentation that they did, where it showed the Plan Commission, kind of the before and the after, uh, walking through the development, uh, in terms of all the changes that were made to the massing and to the articulation of the building. I know, as somebody who learns visually, um, I think all the commission members, um, felt that was also kind of a, um, a really excellent way to present it to you, to help us, um, over time, see the changes that have been made. So, um, again, the, the Plan Commission was very favorable.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. It will be on the agenda on May 2nd.
Good, thank you.
Item E, consideration of resolution 22 dash four dash 2562, authorization to apply for the land and water conservation law con fund grant program for San Damiano, put forth by the city administrator, and this is start for immediate approval.
Just suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve?
I'm opposed to approve.
Brian?
Thank you, uh, this is a very simple resolution to one you adopted last year at around the same time. Um, we were not successful in the law con application last year, in part, uh, because there were more demands for the money and then they had money available. Um, we've had multiple conversations with the DNR about this funding cycle. Again, you know, they can no way commit, uh, to any applicants being successful, but they did, uh, recommend that we, we do put our name, uh, in the proverbial hat, uh, again, to see what happens, um, with the funding. So, uh, we've been working with NSA, who will, uh, put together the first round, uh, made some, some edits to that and we'll be submitting that, uh, with council's blessing tonight, uh, before the deadline of May 1st, uh, to see if we're successful this time around.
Alder Core and then Alder Wood.
Yeah, so did, uh, DNR, did they, um, uh, score the grant last time and did they provide comments that we could address or?
Yeah, I mean, they did, uh, score it last, last, I don't think they were able to score it last time. Their comments, um, were that they, they liked the application, it's more of a timing issue, um, because we know that, uh, we are going to embark upon a, a master plan for the property. We don't have a master plan done at this time, so that, that is something that does impact our application. A lot of the projects that got funded last year were more for, uh, I guess what I'd call active recreation uses, so ball fields, um, you know, those type of, uh, hard recreation, which is not, you know, that's a conversation we'll have with the community, you know, over the next, you know, year and a half, um, as we go through our process. But in communications with the DNR staff, they said, you know, it's still, because it, it basically costs us nothing to put our name back in the hat, they would recommend that we, we do it again, see what, see if, if the JFC or whoever's doing the funding and scoring, if they shift their priorities this year compared to last year.
Is this JFC?
Uh, no, sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
We need to be doing it.
Yeah, no.
Uh, Alder Wood?
Well, yeah, I guess that was my question, if this is for staying under the magic 250,000?
That's, uh, that's Bill Nelson and that, that we did last time around, we stayed under that 250 threshold.
Okay. So this could be?
This, uh, I believe if I remember correctly from last year, our, this is federal money that is a pass through the DNR, uh, we had put in like 1.2 million, I think is what it was, so that will be our, our best again.
Anyone else? Alder, go forth.
Do you know how many funds they have to distribute?
I have to look, I don't know, I don't know what the number is for this year, I know last year's funding cycle, I think they had, it's like, three, three and a half million.
Okay.
And they only, they only ended up funding, I think, three projects, so it's, yeah. Yeah, I would classify it as a long shot, but since the, the bar of entry is pretty low.
Yeah.
Better to have her named than not have her named.
Absolutely, we tick a lot of the boxes, so, um, I would hope we would be considered a strong candidate.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, I just, I want to point out, uh, because this is my, uh, my business, uh, conservation, that the law con program ordinarily, um, again, it's federal money that comes, uh, is passed through DNR. And ordinarily, it is, it is, um, reserved for exactly what we're talking about with San Damiano, which is to say, less development, more conservation, more natural areas, natural preserves, that kind of thing. Um, but in the state of Wisconsin, it's exactly the opposite of that, um, which is to say, the state of Wisconsin peeled off of some of this, um, federal money to create the stewardship fund. Uh, and so they use the stewardship fund for the natural, uh, areas and they use the law con money for more like, more traditional recreation. So, the other 49 states or 48 states would be different, but that's the way it is in Wisconsin.
Wasn't the original intent of the federal funds however? Doug?
So then we might, if we don't get it this time, once we have the master plan done, it might be in a better spot to apply again?
Yes, although we, we would not be able to apply for acquisition costs, so this, this money is to use to, to bite out the cost of acquisition.
Right.
We have, there's a, a letter of retroactivity that's good for two years, um, we're, this, this would be the end of that two-year cycle.
Okay.
We previously, last year, asked the DNR for their approval to extend our letter of retroactivity, they, for whatever reason, denied that. Um, the DNR staff is asking again, the, the folks in the DNR that, that need to be asked, um, so we should hear from them, hopefully in a couple of weeks, this is where they had our second request to extend that has been viewed favorably and if it does, then they'll extend our ability to apply for law con money for acquisition costs, separate from, you know, operational or capital related costs.
Thank you.
Alder, go forth.
Am I right in thinking that this is a grant we could only receive once?
Um, I don't know, I don't, I don't think there's a restriction on, on applying if you receive the money again, but I'm gonna tell you, if you get it once, the, the demand is such that you, you probably would be well behind in the queue.
Okay, yeah.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to reports of committees and commissions, uh, I guess Alder, go forth.
Um, not a lot to report, um, we have a DEI committee meeting on Thursday. Transit, we were unable to meet this week, or last week, sorry, it's a blur, uh, last week, um, so Alder Groupie and I have kind of, I want to steal your time, I have.
Take it away.
You know, we, we're, we're on hold, we're, we're still at the table and we'll be there, um, to support the new Alders stepping in, um, if that needs to happen, so, um, we're planning on a meeting, I believe was that April 25th?
27th. Next, whatever next Wednesday is.
That would be the 27th.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alder Groupie?
Um, uh, I was grateful to Parks this week, last week, for, uh, making some concessions about NOMO May. Uh, very grateful also to the Sustainability Committee for being willing to step up and take that on. For those of you who are not aware, we are going to be hopefully publishing some articles in the Herald online and doing some PSAs, I'm reporting on tomorrow about NOMO May, just to help get the word out and get ahead of it, um, because time is relatively short. Um, I don't know if this is like the time for it, this is my last council meeting, uh, as it is for some others tonight, um, and I won't, you know, belabor it, I won't get too in the weeds, but, um, just to express significant gratitude to city staff and to everybody in the council for the past four years. I've been so lucky to have had the privilege to participate in this process, be elected, learn how local government works, how we can improve it, how we can use it, um, for progressive and positive, um, impacts in the community. Um, and I think we've done some pretty important work, especially over the past two years, and I'm very grateful to have been a part of that. And I will just say, you know, we talk a lot about systems problems, which are very pervasive and exist everywhere, at every level of government across our country, but individual effort still matters, even though there are these big things that we need to topple and dismantle, you know, brick by brick. Um, so to know how to be involved, to be engaged is really important if that, you know, if the Binsleys hadn't come forward to talk about how their property might, might have been affected, maybe that project never would have been altered to accommodate them. You know, if, if, if I hadn't raised my voice once or twice in the council to propose an amendment or to make a change to an amendment, you know, we would still be on the same path. And so I think, and that goes for everybody, not just for me. So I guess I just encourage everybody to get involved if they can, if they're able, um, because I think individual effort matters and it makes a difference. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Alder Moore?
Yeah, um, uh, thank you, a couple, a couple of things, um, the, uh, Molly just mentioned NOMO May, um, the Sustainability Committee is cranking on NOMO May. I know I'll be participating and there will be, uh, a variety of things coming out, um, uh, around that. And I also want to point out that on the 23rd, which is Earth Day, uh, there'll be And I also want to point out that on the 23rd, which is Earth Day, there'll be, again, the recycling event at Ahuska Park, which goes from 8:00 to noon, for any kind of electronics. There's a new flyer up on the city's homepage that, that details what's accepted in that event and what's not, not just the hours. It gives the details of what's, what's accepted there. I encourage everybody to come out. It's a no-touch event, which is to say, we'll have volunteers there to unload your car for you. And with thanks to Alder Groupie, we're also going to be doing some pickups of seniors that might have items that can't make it to Ahuska, in coordination with Senior Center. So that, again, is on the 23rd, on the Saturday, from 8:00 to noon. And, I think that's, that's it. Sorry? Yes, well, yes. Well, as part of the cleanup day that Parks and Rec is doing for all of our parks on the 23rd, San Damiano will certainly be participating in that as well. Friends of San Damiano is organizing volunteers to help us with a, might be considered a second annual cleanup of San Damiano. And, and there's a signup genius and information on that on the Friends of San Damiano website. And I know Parks and Rec has information of, about all the parks, the plans for the parks that day.
Alder Wood?
Let's see. Well, Parks, we discussed No More May is, which we already mentioned that earlier, and also receiving a donation of a, not a donation, but, well, yeah, a new storage shed with Home Talent Baseball, to allow them to place that there. With the San Damiano Steering Committee, I don't know if you were going to talk about that later, just that we're in the process of reviewing seven RFP responses that we got, that are all really high quality. And MPO, as you know, we discussed the Flex Lane, and I sent out some information on that, if anybody wanted to detail over how that may or may not work. It's not, it's not open yet, so I guess I would ask, I wasn't a big advocate of it in the beginning, I'm still not necessarily, but I think we need to wait and see how it actually works in practice. And then you can not like it if you don't like this. And I just wanted to take off a little bit on what Alder Groupie said, the impact of one person can have. And I think the impacts that the three Alders who are leaving us tonight, I think are a good example of, you know, how mu, what impact you can have on your community by putting yourself forward. And I would just, you know, really sincerely thank all three of you for the work and the efforts that you put in on behalf of the community.
Alder Corr?
Lady Board meets tomorrow. I have no other committees that I can report on. I would reiterate that Molly had said, I encourage the community to remain engaged. I am very grateful to have been able to serve these past five years. I did want to take a moment to thank the staff. I, I can't say this enough, how wonderful the staff is that we have at Manona. They, you know, are all in and go above and beyond on a daily basis. And I guess I encourage the community to recognize that as well. You know, thank your public works people for cleaning your streets. Thank our fire and police. They show up day or night. Our fire EMTs are often volunteers, members of the community. I, all of the folks in City Hall put in their all, all the time. I'm grateful for all that they do. But yes, this has been a pleasure, and I am grateful for the opportunity.
Alder Thomas?
I have no committee reports, but for the three of you who are leaving us, I thank you for your service. I've learned from all of you. The community has benefited from it. I think these have been, the last two years have been, because of COVID, have been, in all of my years, the most challenging times to try and serve on the council. I think it's difficult when you can't get together and establish good commitment and good relationships. So you've served during a really trying time. And let me remind you that you can always come back, because I'm living proof of that. So thanks for everything you've done. We're very grateful.
Thank you, Kathy.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Sorry, as long as everybody's going to be extending gratitude, I was, I didn't know if we were going to do that as part of our committee reports.
Of course, I kind of forgot to do the diversity. This was staying.
Right, right. That's all right. But I, but I do want to extend my gratitude, Kristi, Molly, and Jennifer as well.
And Brian, miss you so much. Miss you so much.
Yeah, well, I was going to go there, I was going to let the mayor go there. But, but first, anyway. But, but I also want to extend my gratitude to the three of you, and thank you for your collegiality and your wisdom and your expertise, everything you brought to the table. It takes, the other thing that a lot of residents probably don't know is how much time it saves, and how, to do it well. You know, I think probably people underestimate, I know a lot of times when I'm talking to people, when I say I'm on four different committees. And like just today, as a matter of fact, I was, people are sometimes shocked. So, I mean, it just, I really appreciate everything that either three of you have done. And I know you're not going away, and you're going to probably be sitting, it's on the appearance section.
I agree.
So, I mean, we're just, we'll just expect to see you. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have anything to?
Chief? Yes. Thank you, Council. I'll, I'll just start by thanking our public safety team. We've had a challenging couple of weeks. You know, I come from second largest, working for the second largest city in the state, where we have a lot of resources. So I managed a crime scene unit, I managed a team of detectives, I managed some really skilled and capable folks that worked in a large team setting. I am impressed by the work that Public Safety Team is doing here, particularly the Police Department, with significantly fewer resources. We don't have a violent crime unit, we don't have a property crime unit, but we're responding, unfortunately, we're working to solve that, but responding to some pretty horrific calls, including a couple of attempted homicide weapons offenses in the last couple of weeks. We live in a safe community, and I want folks to understand that, that you should feel safe, but we have work to do to feel even safer. Not everyone feels safe, and that's my job and all of our jobs, to make sure that folks do have a sense of safety and security. But I want to acknowledge that, you know, with limited resources, there is good work being done, and some accountability to those who are committing these crimes that are being made by members of your police department. So kudos to them, and I thank them every day. And I appreciate the recognition that all of you have provided in my short time here thus far as well, because it goes a long way. So thank you. Next, I just want to give a plug for, speaking of safety, for Home Safety Nights. We're, we're hosting here at this very room on the 21st of April this week at 6:30. Home Safety Night is being sponsored by the Madison Area Crime Stoppers. It's the first event that they're having, and they specifically requested to have it in Manona, and to partner with Manona. Some of it may have to do with the new guy, but I think a lot of it just has to do with sort of the trends that are happening sort of on the east side of Madison in general, with respect to property crimes, some of the scams that we're seeing on the increase to targeting some of our senior population and others. So we hope to accomplish is to offer tips, pointers, and I'll report on some trends that are, that are happening regionally and nationally. And there might be some giveaways that Crime Stoppers is going to provide as well. So again, that's April 21st at 6:30 PM, and at the Manona Library, in this very room, the municipal room. So if you're able to attend, or spread the word, please do so. And Alders, and incoming Alders, I believe, I, I sent you an email today, so if you can check that, if you haven't, that, that's got more information on that, that you can give a plug to. I'd appreciate it. And lastly, although what's important for me is police chief to do these report outs, and I will try to keep them, not sure, but regularly attend, I'm really, really here also to give a shout out to all of you who are departing. And I just want to say that, you know, over two decades of working in public service, and wearing a uniform, and being a commander, and having lots of communication and encounters, and working relationship with our elected officials and our city leadership, I brag about this place every day. Check me on that, I do. We, I found the gem, as I tell my former colleagues and some of the, my, my former associates in the city of Madison, political spectrum, I'll say, you're good people who are well-intentioned and are not shy to share opinion, which I appreciate, because I'm the same person. We've not always agreed, and that's okay, but we're civil. You, you take the time to listen, and more importantly, you care about, as you mentioned here today, city staff, who are public servants. I will acknowledge that you have hired, through the city employment, a lot of folks who could be getting paid a lot more money for doing what they do, but that's not why they're in the job. They're in the job because they care. And I think that it's good to hear, as I mentioned before, your acknowledgement of that, because again, it goes a long way. So thank you for saying thank you, because it goes a long way. And for the Alders and our fearless city administrator who are leaving, gone but not too far away, within arm's reach, thank you for sort of walking the new guy along, showing him the ropes. I very much appreciate that, and I will miss all of you. And for the incoming Alders, and those of you who I have not met, for coffee, I don't do coffee, you all know that, or for a hot chocolate in a while, that's meat. And I look forward to working with the new council in the years to come. So, and then lastly, I will just say, I will be practicing my Spanish in Sudamerica. Estoy en viaje, I'm going on vacation next week, so I'll be doing a little Alder Moore traveling, trying my best to imitate. But our good fearless leader, Assistant Chief Duman, will be at the helm, and will be your resource for the Police Department while I'm away. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, I'm just going to go next, and let Administrator Gatto go last. I too would like to thank the Alders who are leaving, this last meeting, the three of you. When I think back to the last five years, it's been pretty crazy. I've listed, I know various things I've put out about Brian leaving, and just listing what has happened in the city in the last five years. Administrator hirings, and floods, and pandemics, and racial-related incidents, and new buildings, and it's just, it's been a lot, and I really appreciate all the time and efforts you've all put in on it. And Brian, we are really going to miss you. You've been, you've just added so much to the city, and you've been a great leader for the last three and a half years. However, I do have your phone number in your hand. And I'm sure I may be using it occasionally, but I'll try to restrain myself. So we, we appreciate everything you've done, and wish you all the best, and it's a wonderful opportunity for you. So good luck going forward.
Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate those kind words. And for those of you that, you know, have come to know me over the last couple of years, you know that I'm a classic introvert, so hearing you say nice things about me is touchingly excruciating.
You're my best friend, Brian.
Yeah, it's like nails on a chocolate for me, but I really do appreciate it and all that. I just have a couple quick things I wanted to say. First, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the residents of Manona for the past three-plus years. This community, to their credit, really welcomed me with open arms, and really supported my professional growth over the years, and that's not gone unnoticed by me. As I've often told my administrative colleagues elsewhere in Dean County and Minnesota, this is one of the reasons why I have enjoyed my time in Manona. The residents here truly embody the small-town character that we reference when we talk about what makes Manona a special place, and you don't find that anywhere. And I have colleagues that don't have that. So I appreciate the residents that, as they say in Parks and Rec, that they care loudly at you. And so, you know, we appreciate you, you making contact with us, the city staff, to acknowledge what we do on a daily basis. To the mayor, to the city council, members of the CDA, any other committees that I've had the pleasure to work with over the last couple of years, thank you for the opportunity to really work on some amazing projects, such as the purchase of San Damiano, planning for new civic facilities that will last this community for generations to come, and for the Riverfront Redevelopment Project. I could not have asked for a better collection of individuals to work for. I hope that I brought as much value to you and to the residents as you've provided to me over the last couple of years. And lastly, to my city staff, colleagues, you have my endless gratitude for all of your assistance and support over the last couple of years, particularly the most challenging two years that we all probably have experienced in local government with the pandemic and other things going on. I will truly miss working with all of you, making the city great. And as I will just be down the road, as the mayor mentioned, I'd look forward to stopping by on occasion to see how this community continues to grow and change. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Brian. Yes, I think that's everything we had, except we have an organization meeting tomorrow night for people who are continuing on, and new council members, at 5:30. I'll see you then, and I know at least a couple of you are going to stay involved with the city who are leaving in the volunteer process, so that's great too, and we look forward to seeing you guys again. So thank you all very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.